So, yes, Jamie is, I'm filling in for Jennifer this evening in her absence, so we'll call the meeting to order.
We won't hold you back.
Yeah, well, if you want to hit.
So, first agenda items, we're going to swear, new member, everybody, this is Brooke. Hi.
Hello, Brooke.
She is our second student member, which gives us an official full board, which is very rare for this board, so, very exciting. So, left hand, right hand, and then I'll put it here, so you don't have to figure out what I'm saying. So, repeat after me, I, Brooke Cox.
I, Brooke Cox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And, I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As an environmental sustainability board member.
As an environmental sustainability board member.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
That's like no more speaking for me.
Welcome, welcome.
It's on the pen.
Gracias. So, the next agenda item will require motion and adoption by, that's it. And I just recently was able to attach those minutes, so if you want to take time to look at them, they should be, as an attachment under the.
Under the full agenda packet?
Yes.
Okay. And that was July 10th. It's gonna be hard to read.
We didn't give them wifi, you know we have wifi?
Yes, it's.
Yes. Here's the password.
Well, if you want to like, it's fine.
Lowercase works fine.
Oh, okay.
Which one is it?
Did you say lowercase of that one?
Yes.
Okay.
At least it worked for me.
Yeah, it worked for me, too.
Does everybody have a chance to read?
Um, I have to cut out at around quarter to eight, and I gotta get home to.
Okay. I think we can aim for a, close at that time.
Goals always an hour, yeah.
Yeah.
Goals always an hour.
All right, perfect.
So, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
As written.
All motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
And then, I apologize, I kind of mixed up the order, we're supposed to set the agenda versus anything.
Okay.
Motion to set the agenda.
Shall we go back?
I'll just reverse the order on that.
Okay.
Motion to set the agenda. All second.
As written, right?
Yes. Okay, so, I wanted to do some just quick, B-City updates, I brought the sign, and hopefully, before, now past the week, we can all just get a picture with it, and I can get a picture of everybody with the sign.
Is that all we get, is just one sign? Or can we?
We can order more, the requirement's only, it only requires us to post one sign. Just one of the things I did want to talk to you all about as well, and we can hop around, where do you think the sign should be placed?
You think, probably like Stowe Park, maybe?
Yeah, Stowe Park, probably.
Because that's like downtown, a lot of people go there.
At the park, or Main Street, or?
Yeah.
Wherever the most traffic may occur. Or visibility, I guess. Makes sense to me.
No, it has to go here.
No.
For sure. So, I'll share those suggestions with our Public Works Director, and they will do what they've got to do, with this one posted.
Great.
Another thing that we have to do for B-City, set annual goals, so, we're in here. So, some of the examples they gave us for annual goals for the first year would be bringing the stakeholders together to create the annual goals for this meeting, so, let's just check it off, because we're doing that now.
There we go.
The other goals to mount, at least, will be B-City USA tree signs, and we'll do that. And then, another idea was asking your city council to make a proclamation in support of National Pollinator Week, we can post your adopted resolution and announce your committee members many times on the city webpage, which is easy enough, so, is everybody good with that in mind as well? Participating in B-City USA seminars, we'll have to look into that.
Is that watching or making?
Watching. I'll just look into this. Launching a Facebook page, is that something I would be interested in?
Does it have to be a separate page, or could it be part of the existing city?
I think it could probably just be a section on our existing city website, okay, to create multiple Facebook pages for the city that people have to pay attention to, so, I think that's again, being just kind of incorporating it in, making it a section on it.
And is the same applied to the website?
Yes, the same applies to the website, we'll just create a page, I can designate it B-City USA page, and then link it to the front page, so you will be fine with it. That's your first annual awareness event during National Pollinator Week.
Well, it is national.
The first poll we could do.
Were we gonna do our event during Arbor Day?
That's another idea, too, it's like, this is just, these are just ideas that we don't want to adopt, that as one of our annual goals, we can always make, you know, plan a specific part of Arbor Day Festival to be showcased, I guess.
Yeah, that would probably work best, because people will already be out, but if anyone wants to do a separate B-City day.
Is there a real consensus that we might just keep doing it about, when they're already just thinking about it?
Sure. I mean, what would that entail on our part as a board? Do we need to be present, or speak, or anything, or?
I think it's something that we can really build to be whatever we want, it doesn't have anything specific, it's just an awareness event, so we can.
We can discuss that.
Could we get like, a beekeeper to come?
Yeah.
I have a teacher that I had last year who has bees.
She does have bees.
Yes, I could ask her about that.
Yeah, definitely, I know last year, Beekeeper Association, I think, of Gastonia or something, and they have all sorts of like little demo things, so, yeah, we have a whole, you know, setup just dedicated to bees.
Like a little booth, yeah.
Something that would be, so, that was all their examples, do we have any other annual goals we'd like to add? So far, we are bringing our group together to our meetings, mounting at least one sign, posting our resolution, and announcing our committee members on the, incorporating information about B-City onto our Facebook page, adding, and adding the B-City Bee, or B-City Booth to Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, okay. What typically occurred on Arbor Day around here?
So, it's changed every year.
Okay.
This last year, I think, was probably our biggest, and we probably had a great time with it, we had multiple vendors from all across Gastonia County, we did a ladybug release, which was like a huge hit, with the kids, Belmont Gardens, Community Gardens sponsored that.
Actually, I went to the ladybug release.
Yeah, so that was our Arbor Day celebration, we had the art contest where the trash truck was wrapped.
The shredded truck.
The shredded truck, on site, had some good food vendors, live music.
Very cool, alright.
So, just about a four, that's about four hours, four hour bit.
Sounds like it fits in, yeah.
It was a good time, usually, in the past, we have switched back and forth, with hosting it in City of Belmont and the town park, so we go just kind of back and forth, because we're both Tree Cities, but it sounds to me like the city is interested in having its own Arbor Day Tree Festival every year, without kind of going back and forth and choosing to host, so, it sounds like we'll be having another one this year, remember, Cassidy, she can do what she did last year, which is, Cassidy's our special events coordinator, she can come in and help us plan what we want this event to look like, so she'll probably come either October, November, and really start planning that event for next spring.
Hey, Jamie, on the subject of annual goals, do the B-City folks give us any examples of what other goals other municipalities might give?
Yeah, the ones that we're at off are all they gave, but we can totally add, or, you know, it's really whatever, y'all see that you want to add, we can start off small and reevaluate for next year's goals.
Is it possible to do some sort of, like planting, like a little pollinator garden or something?
We can, yeah.
In one of the parks, one of the public parks?
Yeah.
Maybe even just start with like one or two.
Yeah.
I like that.
Start small, sure.
Yeah. I don't know if that has to be approved by, like, Public Works, or?
We can work with them to find them location, I'm sure there's locations in different parks that they know, or have already been identified, that's needing extra planning, so, yeah, I could ask for them.
Okay, yeah, maybe we could do, like, species identification plaques, or something.
Like, little species little things.
Like have like butterfly bushes and stuff, like this monarch butterfly.
Right, yeah.
Because a lot of people probably won't know exactly what they're looking at.
Pretty flowers.
Definitely, we want to label that as a pollinator garden. Right. And then we could maybe have the little B-City icon on it, or something, yeah.
Are there community gardens that the city makes available, is that probably a target site?
That's the only one I'm aware of, as well.
There's, there's a community garden, it may just be for the residents in, at Seven Oaks, and I don't, I don't know if it's open to the public, but it's a larger garden, and I believe that's city property, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's owned by an applied developer.
Yeah, maybe it is, okay.
We can look into it.
Alright.
Is there some sort of map that shows where we can do things like this, that's kind of open for communities to, you know, plant gardens in certain areas?
I don't know where, but that's a cool idea.
I mean, you can, on the county GIS, you can look at like what's publicly owned, but I don't know if that still limits what you're allowed to do.
Yeah, I guess if you see what's publicly owned, you can kind of hone in on a couple areas that would be a good fit for, and then kind of write a proposal to do something with that, but, yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
That's a neat idea, having a map that kind of shows.
What options are.
I'll look into it, and ask.
How much does it cost to get the B-City sign?
I think that's like twenty dollars.
Oh, that's not bad, so we could definitely get more like.
Yeah, if you want to do more than one.
I don't know.
I don't know if there are any other like parks.
Parks in Belmont?
Yeah, there aren't any. Yeah, I think, for sure, Stowe Park is a great idea, but also, I think it'd be great if it's somewhere along Seventy-four, you know, just for all the traffic that goes down Seventy-four.
So, is the goal two?
Yeah.
Kevin Lofton would be a good one, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking Lofton, Lofton's right off Seventy-four?
Yeah.
So, good visibility, definitely.
I'm thinking, if we were to put it on Seventy-four, we'd like a bigger sign, because cars.
That's true.
Because it'd be cars that would see it, not like passerbyers. But, that's like, I think that the heaviest traffic spot, though.
Yeah.
There is a Tree City sign right there, but it's small, and, well, I think it's actually on the other side of Seventy-four, as you're coming in, but.
We just hyphenate, Tree.
Yeah. And it's small, though, actually, it's probably only this big, so, most people probably don't even see it, but.
I wonder would it make sense at all to have it facing, have one facing the lake, or the river at that point, for boat traffic?
It's an interesting idea.
Well, I can take all the bees to David and see what he recommends, because I'm sure there's, you know, the things that he knows wouldn't work and what wouldn't work, and I'm sure we probably have traffic counts that we use as well, because there's, I don't remember the laws everywhere, so, when they're doing traffic counts, so, I'm sure we got that researched somewhere.
So, question, excuse my ignorance, we're B-City, we're going to meet these goals, is there a way, I guess, or what are we doing to align ourselves with the goals of B-City umbrella, like, what are they? I know we have, I know we have an area where we keep our bees, right, is there anything else?
We don't have like a specific area where we keep these, I think the whole purpose of the citizens wanting Belmont to become B-City USA is just to have a better idea of understanding the integrated pest management program, so the city now has an integrated pest management program, and then just making the city as a whole recognize for encouraging the pollinators.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, these are things I was looking for.
There's no actual, like, ordinances against where, or where they can be kept, or if the resident wants them, we really encourage them to check with their H.O.A.'s first, but that's why you have some of the bee stocks out here, they're on kind of property, they're just really close to public property, so, it seems like they're kind of just more of them than we are.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was part of the B-City program, those.
Yeah, no, that's a resident, that's a resident's personal hives.
Yeah, okay, their bee collection. So, integrated pest management program, plant, pollinate, pollinators, or pollinator gardens, okay, and that's kind of gets you in the, in the B-City group?
Yeah, I don't know, we're working on that, integrated pest management program, we had the current contractor, who does all of our maintenance for the parks, present, so he was aware of what changes needed to be made chemical-wise, and then a big part of that plan was communication and posting, so, whenever parks are going to be sprayed, or public railways are going to be sprayed, or treated, they need to have signage and adequate communication out to the community, and all beekeepers as well, so that they can close it perhaps.
Ah, okay, alright, that was, I didn't quite make the connection on that until you mentioned that last piece. Yeah, that's good to know.
And I think everybody has a copy deal, but I can resend out IPM if anybody wants to review it.
Yeah, I think we have a copy of that, somewhere.
Electronic is good.
Yeah, I'll send it out again, just for you measure.
Very good.
So, I think the only goal that we changed was, instead of one street sign, we want to do two street signs. Good, alright, okay, so I will type these all up and make sense of them, because it's written scratch.
That's beautiful.
And attach it to the next agenda for adoption at the next meeting, does that sound?
You could just scan that in.
Okay, so that's what I'll do for this.
I have a question about that sign that's in front of Stowe Park, it's electronic sign?
The kiosks?
Are we on that at all? For information, I see people go up to it, and can they, is it interactive?
It's, it is interactive, most of the information on it is for the local businesses.
Okay.
So, the map on there has like icons to different types of businesses, if you want to click on restaurants, you can click on restaurants.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And sales, but they do have kind of like a scrolling announcement, it's, I guess, rotation that goes on when it's not being used, so if there is something that we wanted to, like, we wanted to advertise for the events that we have coming up, we can put them on there.
Okay.
And I was thinking if it was interactive, who owns it, City Belmont?
Yes, that's the Main Street program.
I mean, I don't know if they, just putting this out there, just a little link on, like, either Sustainability Board, or Recycling FAQs.
Yeah.
Something like that, was wondering if that was possible.
I can ask, because Main Street Director is the one who handles all the content for it, so if we can narrow down exactly, maybe we can target it in propositions, like keep our parks clean, recycle.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it seems like going back to, and is this on the agenda, talking about the recycling facts?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Alright, wait for that, then.
I like that, though.
It's two items, no.
I think I could be patient.
And if we did get the pollinator garden, could we add that to the map, or does it not extend very far? So, I'm not sure where we'd be able to put that.
That map covers the overall downtown area.
Okay.
I'm sorry, maybe if we did something with the community garden, it could include that, but if we went off to Lofton, or Lipton, or different parts, the map doesn't.
Grow.
Yeah.
Maybe one day.
Maybe one day.
But, that would be neat, sometimes, you know, especially people just walking through Belmont, if they're from Gastonia, or, I even have people from my job, from Charlotte, that come to Belmont for, to like eat or something, and sometimes you're just walking along, you drink their cappuccino, and they would go up to it, and, you know, we built something nice, especially like pollinator garden, like, if I was walking, I'd say, well, let's go see this, you know, it's a site.
Yes.
Neat idea.
Absolutely, we kind of touched on it last point, the website presence, and just, as part of our goals, we'll create a website, and we'll probably have that up at the next meeting, and kind of get Charles' feedback, and we can just put it live on the TV, and edit it, whatever you want to call it.
Would that be, would there be a, an appropriate section of the current website, or would we have to think about, would it go under the board?
Ideally, it would go under the board.
Okay.
We can put it under.
Can you link to it from different?
Yes, yeah. So, we'll probably have a page, or a sub-page, right under the Environmental Sustainability Board. I can ask how they have like a whole thing dedicated to history, and we can have a whole thing dedicated to B-City, but it just kind of hides under here. So, I'll ask about that, that's a good question. And we can definitely link it to different parts, and so.
We could have a link from our site.
Excuse me, I will add that, and we can do like a working session for it at the next meeting.
And, so the how-do-I section, could we add like a recycling thing under there?
Yes.
Just?
I didn't even think about that.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good idea, I wouldn't think to look under government for that.
The recycling thing is just a little hidden, right?
Yeah, how-do-I definitely makes more sense.
I was like, yeah, that's a great idea. Okay, so this is a quick update, the North Carolina Urban Community Force grant, so the city was awarded, I keep forgetting that all of you are almost new, so this is something we applied for last year to update our tree ordinance and set our land development code. So, the land development code, and the specific chapter that we're looking to update, really deals with tree canopy, tree replacement, it's the chapter that kind of regulates landscaping and parking lots, anything dealing with removal and replanting trees, this is part of this chapter. Members before, you all, were very passionate about getting this either strengthened, at least looked at, and figuring out if it's working, if it's not working, what can we do to improve it. So, we applied for this grant, and we were awarded, it was twelve thousand five hundred to go towards hiring a consultant, who will come in and look at our ordinance, and tell us if it's working, tell us where it can be strengthened, and then do a rewrite, and then update of that chapter. So, we're right now finalizing the contract, we've got all the signatures, we're just going to provide all the supplemental paperwork that they're requiring, our next step will be to, will be to hire a consultant, and I think I gave you all copies of the complete grant packet, it has the consultants that we're looking at, we're just going to narrow down to one, and then once that consultant comes in, we're going to be creating a steering committee, which, we would like to have a few members from this board on, we'll take members from this board, the planning department, and the ones that are going to the force, the land development codes, residents, kind of just get a really diverse group of people, builders, developers, everybody that kind of would have to deal with this chapter at the table, and to look at what it would look like to change it, what works, what doesn't work, and kind of just get those conversations going. The timeline for this project is one year, so, we're kind of on the top of our contract right now, as well as wrapping the paperwork up, and getting consultants hired. The other part of this project is an environmental, educational piece, it's a program with high school and middle school and elementary schools developing this type of programs, so, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, please look at it, I will have, definitely have more information at the next meeting, we'll just finalize everything, but I did just want to give a quick update on what we're awarded, we're moving forward, we just got to get a sign out door.
How much longer do we have?
They said take your time on it, but we want this.
Done by the end of the year?
Oh, but it's from September to July, so, our contract period starts September 1st, we've got to get all this turned in before we can continue forward, but then July 31st is our deadline, to have everything completed, and we did a start project timeline until October, so, we're still kind of on schedule, but pushing it a little bit. But, yeah, so this will be a big project in the upcoming years, making sure we stay on top of this, and getting the steering committee forum to get in the meetings out, they want, our goal is to have some community input meetings as well, as well, invite members of the community to come in and kind of share what they've seen, their thoughts on it, and I'll be the kind of the consultant, those are the things, so, if you haven't read it, if you need another copy.
Is there an electronic version?
There is.
No, that'd be great.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I will email you all a copy.
That's great.
Do we need to do anything as far as helping to hire someone, or is that all?
Staff is picking it right now, we didn't have to go through the official process, there are I think three that visited for it. So we're figuring out who we need to do most of it. So I don't know this project. I saw some staff members have already worked with these consultants. I've never worked with any of them. We're just reviewing and looking at what they've done for other cities. And we'll need to also help with the educational programs. While we'll work at our schools.
Definitely.
So Jamie, the amount of the grant was known by the bidders in advance, right? So I guess the question I would ask is, do they feel comfortable with the commitment for that price?
The amount of the grant, what we requested was based on the quotes that we were getting.
Okay.
So it's a 50-50 split, so they're matching, or it's a matching grant.
Okay.
So we're putting up the other $12,500 in incense and sitting in actual cash. So, yeah, we made our thing based on what they said.
So the total budget for the work for the consultants, $25,000, in other words? Is that right? Okay.
That is correct.
Alright.
And that's all broken down in the... There's a budget and a project timeline, so make sure you all get the copy of that.
Okay. Good.
Second right, Nancy. So you all have your stickers. L-T and the Recycle Right, N.C. Kind of like a meet and greet conference thing that they have in Asheville, just to kind of get more information on what they were doing. So it's coming out of the North Carolina DEQ. Division of Environmental Assistance and Customer Services, DEGS. So non-regarding sort of division of N.C. DEQ. Anyways, just to kind of see what their purpose and project was. So what they have been working on are graphics for each municipality that explain what is recycled, what's currently being accepted at their local MRF. The MRF is where all our cycles go.
Okay.
So you can order different graphics and how you distribute those up to you. You're basically getting the design files and then using it now as a local printer to print it out. So I just kind of got copies of everything. And the reason I didn't order from them is because we have several people on staff who can recreate this stuff and make it look more like it's coming from Belmont.
Okay.
But this is really...
helpful and a good start, yeah.
It was informative, this is a good start. Something that we can go off of. So that was the biggest update that I had from that conference. Moving forward though, we're still tasked with dealing projects that encourage citizens to recycle better. So I've got a ton of more stickers that I don't know what y'all would think is the best thing to do with them. Some of the ideas I thought we're doing like a social media ambassador campaign and kind of, you know, either self-nomination or nomination of somebody else saying that they make a great candidate and, you know, once a week they post a picture of the sticker and why they're choosing to recycle right, what they're doing, kind of like a, just a complete social media campaign. If you all have any other ideas, I'm totally open.
That sounds exciting.
There's like a party bus going out over here.
Very open to whatever you all think would be just to kind of do projects-wise, initiative-wise with getting our citizens to understand.
I would say kids, like school stuff is always, is pretty effective.
Or would we use... This is the girls' country team. Yeah. They must have won.
Yeah. Anyway, so like if we can make a more kid-friendly version of like using the... Something like those graphics in a very like kid-friendly way. And maybe trying to pass some of those out at schools, take home to their parents.
Okay.
Yeah, and I noticed when I went, like we went on some college tours over the summer and some of the schools had with their like trash and recycling, they had little like pictures on it of what you can put in each thing. One of them even had like a little cubby with like examples. I'm like, that's too much, but like just little things on it.
Seen that, think of Whole Foods with their little cubby? They'll have like little plastic cutlery or whatever in their cubbies. And they'll say, "That goes, this now, it's going down."
Yeah.
Can't get it wrong.
Yeah, so maybe creating some sort of poster for, to post at the schools.
Yes.
And I don't know how much this costs or if we even have like a local magazine or something like that, but I saw, I think I sent you a picture of Mecklenburg County ran an ad in Natural Awakenings Magazine, which I actually got at Organic Supermarket in Gastonia. So of just of, it was like, "Help Mecklenburg County recycle better." And then it shows what you can recycle and what you can't recycle. And it was just like a half-page ad.
If somebody's open to writing something, we could probably get it to Belmont again.
Okay.
And they'd probably run something, live to our publisher on...
Facebook, yeah.
Facebook website, something of that way.
So Jamie, I remember when I moved here five months ago, the city brought out our containers.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is not, this is probably not normal, but a very nice gentleman from the city came out, explained what can be recycled and what couldn't. I mean, that's...
Your house?
Yeah. So that's not normal service, I take it, so... But had he had, you know, one of these two-page, you know, front and back kind of flyer that explains it with, you know, a little more detail and graphics and colors, you know, we certainly would keep that.
Okay. So do they, probably should just give you like a packet of information at all or just, it was just the bins?
There was a refrigerator magnet, I remember that, which I think had the dates, the calendar. And then there was, there was some type of flyer, a small, small one.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember what else he gave us. And then his business card. But I don't know if that's out of the ordinary or what.
Sounds like he has special services.
Yeah, that's what happened when I moved.
That's why I was hesitant to bring it up because every time, you know, ownership changes of a household or anything, that's probably not the norm for the city to go out. Unless they're replacing the recycling bins.
I know when we talked to Voice Pro though, she did send us this, there's like a welcome packet that new residents get.
Mm-hmm.
But I haven't actually seen what the welcome packet is or what it contains. So if we could include something like this in the welcome packet.
That would be great.
Yeah, when I moved, I didn't get anything from Waste Management. We didn't even get new bins. So...
Because it's an attached property.
Yeah, which was fine, but I, we did get like a welcome package from the city. So I don't know if we could put the magnet in with it or...
Or some kind of like, like card stock maybe? Like with the, like what you can, what you can't, something like people would keep.
Yeah, right.
So Jamie, it sounds like the intent is to take one of those samples or a couple of them that you got and then configure it specifically for Belmont? And that becomes a separate file or PDF or something we can have on the website?
Yes, so then start sharing that. We can print a lot of stuff at the house too if it's, you know, out there.
Okay.
They can print it out here.
Would we be able to post them kind of downtown maybe by where we have like trash cans and recyclable bins? Stick a poster there that explains it?
We have a labrador now too.
Oh!
This is all thanks, guys.
And then of course we can have booths at like Arbor Day.
Yeah.
And whatever, whatever events the city's hosting. I don't know if this would, how this would play out or if we would get much attendance, but I happen to live in North Belmont, which is where the worst recycling happens, I guess. There is a little park there, Lindberg Park. And I don't know, doing like a workshop there?
Absolutely.
I don't know how many people would show up, but...
When we did the Easter egg hunt up there, it was very well attended.
Okay. It may, yeah, maybe you could couple it with something like that. Because it might be hard for someone to come just to a recycling workshop.
We could do some sort of maybe gardening thing where everyone like plants, little potted plants or something. I don't know how that would work, but I don't know.
That's a big part of the pollinator, the...
Right.
That you all want to do for the gardens. We kind of just, really everything does tie it together, so we can couple this wherever it goes. But I think this is a much more attainable list than we have here with this. Does everybody like the idea of social media with the stickers and that's how we get rid of it?
I think that's cool.
Yeah.
And that's how we get rid of what?
The stickers. So I was thinking like either self-nomination or somebody can nominate you. So if like, I'm going to nominate you because I think he's really great, he knows his information about recycling. So we get the nomination and the city would be like, hey, you've been nominated to be a Recycle Right N.C. Ambassador for the City of Belmont. Here's a sticker, we ask that you show it off probably on, you know, water bottles. I put my other water bottle, which I don't even have. I put it on my other water bottle, I heard you save it in front of your car, just other things. And then take a picture and post it on Facebook. And then, you know, us being us, friend each other, share it all, kind of get it out that way.
Well, I second that nomination, Dee.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Something that's...
Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to... So and then we can hand them out to just people we know in the community and they can...
And that could work with high schools. A lot of them are getting more into like politics and stuff, so that could be like, look, save the environment.
We could give them to people like that we know.
Yeah, because I know some people that are...
It, most of them probably don't have Facebook, but like social media in general, yeah, we get on Instagram.
Do you want to do that? Because I think students are a great way when it comes to Facebook.
Because, yeah, if we were like, hey, you want something that's like, save the earth? They'd be like, oh my gosh, yes.
I'll put it on my hydro flask.
Yeah.
How do y'all feel about that? Just giving to the high school students and letting them run with it?
Sure.
And I'll send y'all...
That's fine.
That works.
And I'll send y'all with either like...
Yeah, we can do it.
Yeah, because I can probably post something.
Yeah, we'll both post something.
And be like, like, send, look, give me if you want something.
I'll just start handing them out. I'll just be like, take this, post it.
I think that's great. And then, you know, come back and let us know if people were receptive of it.
Yeah.
If they were, then that gives us more leverage. But it gives us a reason to kind of make our own stickers and get those printed. I know we've talked about our own like bags, water bottles and all that. Sticker is an easy place to start.
Yeah.
So can the paper on a sticker be recycled?
I don't think so.
Probably on the announcements board. Yes, I know Caleb from Bible Club.
Can we do... There is a... I don't go on Facebook much. Is there a, there is a City Belmont Facebook page, gotta be.
Yes.
And there's also like, for us, we have an Eagle Park. What is that called, the neighbor thing?
Like an HOA page or whatever on Facebook?
No, it's called like Neighbor...
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor. You see how separated I am from it? I hear Lori talk about it, my wife. Wondering if we can, you know, collectively come up with just a sentence or two that we can post on those two places every week.
Yeah.
Did you know? Did you know that pizza boxes can be recycled?
Yeah.
Just please clean out the pizza before you do. Did you know? You know, something like that, that could be posted, something easy, you know? I think...
I like that.
Yeah.
If like City of Belmont could post it maybe?
I have to ask, I know we were in a meeting and they were talking about the next door. And I can't remember if they created an account.
Well, I think for, at least, well, Nextdoor is based on your location. So like I wouldn't be in like Eagle Park Network. But I'd be in North Belmont, or even go all the way to Mecklenburg on where I am. But so it's based on your...
Even better if we have our own little things that'll just be like our weekly task if we set a reminder.
Yeah, because then it would reach...
And we can share it through email, like this is what we're posting this week. And you just copy it, open up your page, paste it, post it.
Yeah.
And I, I know my subdivision has its own separate Facebook page in addition to Nextdoor Neighbor, which would also be a, I don't know what they call it, Southern Belmont? I don't know what ours is called.
That's definitely Southern Belmont, but I don't know.
We're on opposite ends of the city right there.
But yeah, you can broadcast beyond your neighborhood on Nextdoor. So you can isolate to just your neighborhood or you can send it out to the region. So like if you lose your dog, you want everyone in the area to know. But if it's just something about your neighborhood, you can...
Okay, I didn't even know that, okay.
I didn't know that either.
I think potentially maybe even send out to all of Belmont, which would be even better through Nextdoor and through Facebook, through, I don't have an Instagram account.
Yeah, I was going to say, what social media does the city have?
We have an Instagram, Facebook, I think there's a Snapchat.
Okay. I was going to say if there's a Twitter, it would be, that'd be something easy to tweet.
Yeah.
I wonder why we don't have Twitter, we got Snapchat now?
I think Twitter would be easier to use than Snapchat.
We have Twitter.
So the Nextdoor is based on your zip code, is it, maybe, where you live?
I don't know how they write this.
No.
Because we all have the same...
Groups are made, so you know you have a community and someone in that community would be proactive and make a group. And say, this is for us, it would be the Eagle Park group.
So be, could be below the zip code level, right?
Yeah, I think so.
How many zip codes are in Belmont?
Just one.
Just one, right? Okay. So we all share the same zip code? Okay.
So I will send out the first email with the "Did you know?"
I love it.
And we're rotating lists.
Excellent.
I might be forgetting something. It seems like it's been forever since we last talked about it. But from when we talked about the list of questions we had for Waste Management, did we get answers back?
Yes. Again, it's hidden, so I need to make this more visible. So under our page, we've got the recycling and paper water page. So this was sent out with all of the paper water bills.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, no thanks. And then all the frequently asked questions are right here.
Okay.
So we could, I mean, take this list and make your "Did you know?"
Yeah, get started with that.
Just so people don't become inundated, I'd probably pick one or two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could talk to the whole list.
I see, if you go City Belmont, Government, Environmental State of Value Board, Recycling, all of this, yeah, all of this is there.
So it's 36 questions.
And they're like exactly how we questioned them and exactly how they were answered, I saw. It was very funny. No. There's like one question, two sub-questions.
Maybe it's a garbage cans.
Yeah, I can see that.
That was a funny...
Pretty quick responses.
Yeah.
That's so funny, yes. I have 36 questions with 42 sub-questions. Alright, let's go through this fast.
And then I just want to add and put on there holidays. So whenever there is a recognized holiday, trash and recycling is moved back one day. And then one of our staff members actually found that the information that we got from this recent meeting was not the information that was published on other parts of the website. And the information, even the magnet has different information. So we've already set it up that when we go out for the next round of magnets, we should all be kind of in the same group and make sure that the information is...
Sure. And you said this was mailed out recently with...
With whoever receives paper water bills.
Okay. Is it also attached when you get electronic water bill?
It is, you just have to scroll. I always, I look for the amount and I pay it.
Yeah.
I don't think it's rolling, but I should.
Perfect. And then this is, you know, passing, passing that little electronic kiosk over there, I was thinking, you know, I was touching on this before, you walk past it and you see, you know, how does Belmont recycle? Recycling facts. You just click on it and then, I mean, sometimes people aren't looking for this information, but if it's like right in front of their face, they'll pay attention to it. It's all about like spreading, spreading it out, you know?
Absolutely.
So if there's any way...
That's why I like this list, this is...
And it's, most of those things are doable, yeah.
So I found a couple of things funny about the answers.
Okay.
One was, I didn't know, I thought pizza boxes, because they had oil built into them, that you couldn't recycle. But it seems that's not the case.
She said by the time it goes through the processor and everything, it's so broken down.
That's not a problem, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't
But I found it odd that they ask you to flatten it, isn't a pizza box flat by design?
She was very, I guess, adamant about flatening up the cardboard boxes, and I think it's for the efficiency of the people picking it up. So I really liked what she said, you know, flatten everything and then, uh, say, you know, this is your bin, you lift it up, put the flat and stuff, and let the lid be what holds it, so they just grab those cardboard boxes That's the, I am notorious for showing boxes in there.
Yeah.
I think that would be one of the did you knows, it'd be like flatten, flatten, flatten. If you don't flatten your boxes, only this much fit in a truck, where you flatten them, you know.
And it allows stuff to get caught, and they're not gonna take, so we go through each bin to see if a shoebox is caught up in the bottom box, or bottom of the bin, so.
I'm, I'm curious to know how they can process a box that has tape on it or staples on it or two different materials, like paper and plastic, and they said, no, you don't need to remove the plastic.
Yeah.
How? Like, how is this usable?
By the time it goes through, it's all shredded.
So you only do take the staples out of paper?
Really?
So you don't take the staples out, the envelopes of the plastic go recyclable?
Yeah, like that, I mean, it's two, it's two different products, it's plastic and it's paper, and one's glued inside the other one. Like, how is that? I don't know.
And then this is all very specific to just, uh, so like, I guess nobody takes their recycling goods somewhere else. Only takes two different centers as well, so this is just
I guess this is a good first step.
Yes.
That it's all on the same page. Um, another one was, I understand, uh, like styrofoam clam shells are recyclable, but the plastic clam shells is how I read that as well.
The plastic ones are not then?
Yeah.
Is that what I said?
Well, I think what you'd want for further clarification, or not, not from them, but just to look at the bottom of it to see if it's got one of those recycle numbers.
Yeah.
So between that, because it was a quick answer, it was no, you know, don't use the clam shells, but it was the styrofoam and plastic clam shells, including that question, and then I looked at the link that you sent over and then the news reporter has a plastic clam shell in her hand, and she's like, people didn't know these weren't recyclable. And I said, those are really not recyclable, you're right, people didn't know.
There was somewhere where she listed what numbers
It's one, two, four, and five.
So I guess that would be the best way to
Look at the number.
Play show it is, but she, the way she was making it sound was like just clam shells, like, to go food containers, which is not really a good idea.
Yeah.
So she was saying toss those.
So just one, two, four, and five are recyclable.
That could be like, no three.
Another did you know.
That would be a
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, because on the magnet, it says one through six.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is what we are finding, so it's kind of hard to get everybody on the same page.
So with thirty-six of those, we could do one per week. And last, it's almost a full year until we update it again. If we choose to.
I think, yeah, I think there's a few that are just really important. One, plastic bags, you know, the ones that you said definitely do not recycle, the things that are the biggest culprits of causing recycling issues, so I think, you know, did you know, like, please do not put plastic bags in your recycling bin? That makes it worse. Um, another one is when in doubt, throw it out, I think that's a huge one.
Wishing cycling is not recycling.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And I, I don't know how to go about, maybe, let's put our brains together, for houses that use their recycling bin as an additional garbage bin. So when anyone moves into this neighborhood and given this very nice garbage can, and this very nice recycling can, they're very, you know, durable, and, you know, you actually gotta call up to get these delivered to your house, and then you start using the recycling one as a garbage one, and, you know, they don't get picked up like that, but they do ruin our recycling. Why should we say if we're not gonna use it, please return it? That's, you know, not probably the way that we should go, but, you know, just to start it out, I don't know.
Is there a way to request a second garbage can if you need it?
Call them, I know my name is on two garbage cans, two recycling bins.
I think we'd rather people not recycle at all, um, rather than have them mess up our good recycling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can, I guess, just let that be the message and just throw it away.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't use your recycling bin for any trash.
Which that kind of message almost runs counter to what people think as far as, you know, wanting to do the right thing and recycling and replenishing, not going back to raw materials, but just throw it away. But it is a good default answer.
So, I don't know, yeah, I'm gonna write that down, maybe we'll talk, yeah, maybe we'll think about that. Yeah, you don't wanna make people feel bad about it, you don't want people, you know, because we're trying to push out this, this good thing for Belmont, good thing for environment, um, yeah, I don't want it to be in like, uh, not a nice manner.
This just like popped into my head, so we have an environmental like club at our school now, and so if there is anything like we wanna, so like with like little did you know, like facts or something, we do have like announcements every day, if we wanted to get like the environmental club involved with that, like informing like kids, like high school kids and stuff, so like, we give them like a list of stuff to like promote, and like that can be part of like their club activities.
Yeah, because I think Grayson's in charge of it, he said, he was Sanders.
I need to talk to Ms. Sanders.
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Because we can go on announcements like once a week.
Yeah, so like have someone from the environmental club like once a week be like, hey, everyone.
Y'all could even do like a question, like a trivia question, announcements still do in the mornings?
Yeah, and go ask teachers.
In the morning, whoever gets the right answer, get a sticker.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, give you a recycle right sticker.
Yeah.
You get a sticker, good job.
You went, you went to high school, um, same high school?
I went to South Point.
South Point?
I definitely think that one thing we should call out with the little did you knows is telling people not to use trash bags for their recycling. In our neighborhood alone, I'll see, you know, when somebody overfills their bin, you can see the white bag in there.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think people think about it. I had never thought of these.
Plastic.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's wonderful, yeah, that's something else we got from
And save it, you can reuse it for your trash.
Dump it and then put it back in.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you can just like empty it.
Yeah, that's what we do, we dump it and then it becomes the trash bag for the next week.
That's wonderful, like
That's a good tip in.
Yes, that would be, just like, tip, do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, dual purpose. And we could probably go ahead and maybe make a document and start just adding these and then put dates on them, maybe a kind of, as we go down a calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, like share Google Docs.
Like a shared document, that would be cool. Just be thinking of one, throw it on there, add a date.
And then y'all can take stuff off of it for school.
Yeah.
Take stuff off of the city website, you go to the Nextdoor house.
And we can post it like on Instagram or whatever.
I like, uh, I like the table goals and lists.
Small, measurable, easy.
Strategic planning and structure, like this is a big conversation.
So, yeah, I, I've talked to Jennifer a bit about this, and I, I think it's a great idea. I don't know if we'll have enough time to necessarily go through it tonight.
So this would be committees for, under the board, that would
Help in these initiatives.
Help with, okay.
Right.
Yeah, that is, I, I agree that's a
You know, conduct research, do further discussion, and then bring it back to the board for decisions or further discussion, I guess.
And I think we talked about a while back about non-Belmont residents being able to join, like teachers or business owners.
Yeah, and like I don't live in a limit, so if I wasn't a student, I wouldn't be on the board. Because like I have a Belmont zip code, but we're outside the limits.
In Gaston County.
Yeah.
Recycling doesn't come to my house, so.
No, we, there's a, there's a grid right down the road from us that we go to drop it off at, but they don't accept loose paper. Like you can't bring them paper, it's so weird.
Yeah, that's the hard part, it's different for
For everywhere you go, yeah.
That's so bizarre. I think that they bring them to one of five spots to be processed, I mean, how many recycling process facilities are there?
They take cardboard, like
Yeah.
Because we always take them the cardboard at like at Christmas.
They had a link that showed the different recycling, uh, containers, or containers, facilities in North Carolina, so I'll find that link and send it to you.
I mean, I guess we need to just maybe think through what committees we'd wanna create, would we want one that focuses on recycling alone? Another on
It could
tree ordinance on, you know, the, the issues around Arbor Day? Maybe another one on, you know, I've got a lot of passion around energy specifically, so energy initiatives for the city?
Something on education, there was, remember someone was big on that, I don't know names, but on getting
Awareness.
Yeah, or like holding class type things to learn about different things, yeah, that's who it was.
Well, it's a team from, like, public information sessions and workshops or public, like a public outreach, I guess, CP dollar.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like once a month or something, yeah, so that'd be a good topic for like a subcommittee.
Yeah.
So recycling, I think we should group with garbage, with the whole recycle, reuse, reduce, and, you know, you can also, on the education side of that, throw like, good idea to compost, good idea to do this, we trash, good idea to reuse these things, these things that you're gonna throw away that are plastic, why don't you reuse it if you have kids? You can turn them into toys maybe, you know, just things like that, but have it as like recycling slash trash or something, subcommittee. And then tree planting, gardening, for under one, then energy, I think is a huge one, I'm an energy, energy guy as well.
Yes, you are.
So there's a lot of stuff that can come out of there with, um, education or send informational conferences or um, sending just little quick links to, you know, to energy ideas, I'm sure you have a ton of things too. So those, so those are three subcommittees.
How, how many people do you think would really be interested in?
It'll just be us.
I would say I've got maybe around ten that have expressed interest of being in a subcommittee. And those were all for people who applied to be responsible that were in city limits.
Okay. So that's good to know, and I wonder also if this might be a way of connecting to the other boards in the city?
Absolutely.
Planning and zoning perhaps, and, and just making sure we're coordinated in their planning efforts and, and discussions. But I, I know Jennifer had thought through and, and sent a, an email with some of the other recommendations she had, so maybe we oughta bring this back up again when she's, she's able to join us. But it sounds like we're in agreement that the idea makes sense, we just gotta figure out the right structure and committees, and we've got able-bodied volunteers.
Yes, they're excited to be here.
Good.
Some students.
Okay, cool.
Oh, great.
So, yeah, I think it'd be great. So I will add that as a recurring agenda item, I bring it back, I'll put these, I had, I had four, so you wanted to put public outreach with recycling and reusing? Or I separated public outreach and recycling?
I would separate. Because we'd want them to be able to not be limited to recycling.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to pick maybe like three topics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we could do one that's just in general public outreach, and they could also deal with recycling and the workshop type things and just advertisement.
So, yeah, with public outreach, I think it would work with all three of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's kind of, you know, the, the medium or the method you go down to
Or this, I mean, this committee could act as the public outreach part of it.
That might make more sense.
Our responsibilities to be getting the information out, so that that would give us to the recycling, trees and energy, and trees needs another.
Well, maybe, maybe there's a broader category around sustainability in general, some sort of, although that's
Then we group them all back together.
So we could do these by topic area or functional, like strategic planning, outreach, um, you know, public education.
Yeah, let's
There's, there's different ways we could slice the committees.
I do think it makes sense to like have like trees, gardening, be keep, I mean, like, is it all, I don't know, you should call that like
Natural world.
Yeah.
Natural resources.
Basically.
Come up with a flash team.
Natural resources. Definitely, yeah.
Outdoors, I don't know.
Wildlife.
Wild. I'm on the wild subcommittee.
That's a good name.
Speaking of next meeting, I'm unfortunately not gonna be able to make it.
That's perfectly fine, I, uh, actually had to talk to the district president anyways because all of planning will be a voting tip for our annual conference. So we need
And that's only, the next meeting would only be, what, three weeks from now?
October ninth.
So you'll be in Wilmington?
Yes, the, um, I don't have a
You wanna send out an email with some alternate dates?
Yeah, I could do that, uh, do y'all wanna meet a week before or a week after is really
Yeah, that day would not work for either of us.
We have our conference tournament that day.
October eighth.
October ninth. Well, that's the second day of it, so we should be fine, because the second day is usually like one match.
Was it tennis?
At like three.
Tennis, yeah, we're both on the tennis team.
Yes.
So how do we feel about the week of the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
I feel like if we go a week before, we're
Tennis. Yeah, so the sixteenth, that would be fine.
Would the fifteenth also be available?
That might work better for me, too.
Yeah, because
That's firing it up for you, yeah.
My son's getting married that Saturday, so I don't know when I need to start taking off work, but
It was your daughter that just got married.
Yeah, five weeks ago, so now my son's getting married.
Good thing weddings are cheap.
Yeah, right. So the closer to the, end of the week, makes it more difficult for me. And it sounds like too
The closer to the end of which week?
The fifteenth is time for fact for me, this is the majority of the votes, so whatever.
That should work.
Yeah.
Fifteenth.
Okay, so rescheduling the meeting on the ninth to the fifteenth?
Tentatively.
If you wanna make a motion and approve it?
Hey, motion to reschedule the meeting to the fifteenth? October, okay.
Yay, and approved.
Six thirty, right?
Look, we accomplished something.
Yes, six thirty, unless you all wanna change it to something else.
Six thirty works, good for me.
All right, I'll reserve this room.
That won't conflict with another board, will it?
It should, I don't think it's on two sixes. Yeah, because this was completely on one, it's reserved, so
Okay.
All right, I'll get those reserved.
Thank you.
Actually, I was gonna check that out, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing that up. And then real quick, because I don't have time, just a second.
Thank you, I completely forgot.
You have fun.
So the iCup is training, I'm gonna have to move, we called iCupus to kind of, ideally you will all be able to log in and unpack it and take minutes, or take notes while we go to the meeting. So like I'm pulling things up, you'll be able to take your own notes and kind of add in whatever you want. But it wasn't set up correctly for all reusers, so they are working on back end to fix it, and I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna call them to kind of walk us through how to train you all on it. It could have conduct for board members, everybody has a copy of it, if you could, before you leave tonight, read it over, so and if you want to take it home, free to sign it, you can email back to me, I think that's fine as well. City council has requested that all staff and board members, any public officials, sign it and and get it back to us to have them file, and then, and we'll be able to do a quick thing over at River Fest.
Sure.
What is
So, um, I was kind of hoping we could do something at River Fest, but it's September twenty-eighth, so, um, maybe next year we'll, we can plan for it.
It's Saturday?
It's
Week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday.
Yeah.
So it's through, it's, it's hosted by Catawba Riverkeeper, um, my two coworkers are board members for Catawba Riverkeeper. So it's just a, it's their annual like big festival to raise money for the Riverkeeper Foundation. So, um, I mean, I think, I'll probably go, um, maybe in the future we can think about doing something there, um, you know, you can get under funds and whatnot, um, but if people are available and
I think it's been, I can take one of these recycling things and like, like, or hand out.
Yeah, something, something like that, something like, yeah.
Yep, it's at the Riverfront Park, right?
It's at, it's at Kevin Lofton.
Okay.
It, last year it was at the Marina, um, which was, I actually thought a good spot, but, um, um, it's, and it's
I went last year, okay, yeah.
Over by Yorkchester kind of.
Yeah.
So they'll have like kayaking, vendors, um, food trucks, beer, all, you know, just a good time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I pushed you guys all into it and then I couldn't make it myself. Painfully hot last year, so across that, it will be a little bit more reasonable.
Well, could I at least post something through Facebook, through City of Belmont?
I'm on the, I'm on the website for it. I'm on the, I'm on the website for it right now.
So I, hopefully, since my coworkers are on the board, we're hoping we can have some sort of joint initiative between us and them in the future, because they hold events all the time. They're not necessarily in Belmont, but a lot that they do is in Belmont. Their executive director actually lives in Belmont. So, so yeah, just kind of a, hopefully a start to a relationship.
Yes.
Sure.
So, and it's, it's a good time. It's similar to the, kind of the things that they would have down here in mainstream, so.
Do you want me to put together a handout for it?
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I definitely don't think that they would have any fall against that.
So there's a silent auction, a raffle, and all kinds of things, vendor booths.
Yeah, and this is their big fundraiser for the year, so.
There's kids there, right?
Yeah, kid-friendly, for sure. And I think they'll have several kid-friendly events. I can't.
What do you think about this?
I can't tell exactly what they are, but.
Okay. Maybe not for this one, but a booth later for kids. So you throw out a bunch of garbage on the ground and you have like three or four bins and the kids have to put them in the right bin.
Yeah.
That would be so cute.
And they get like a sticker.
I know, my daughter would like that.
Yeah. And you know, the Riverkeeper, I'm sure, deals with garbage in the streams all the time, so.
That would definitely be an issue, they would be.
And I think they're doing like Lake Wiley sweep.
Yep, it's a river sweep, and I think it's in October. I did it last year and it was great. You just kind of show up and there are people who have boats will come and take you and then.
That's awesome.
Yeah, you just go around the, that, like banks of Lake Wiley and grab trash and whatnot.
It's incredible how much trash we pulled up last year, just one boat.
So is there, do you become a member first before you, no, this is just open to the public, right?
Yeah, it's open to all public, yeah.
Yeah, because I see there's membership. Okay, I'm gonna look through this.
Yeah, my company has done stream cleanups with them. They're primarily in Charlotte and same thing, this small little stretch of stream will pull up just pounds and pounds of garbage in, in two hours. It's pretty remarkable, so.